Does the red light, does the red light not work anymore, Jimmy? Oh, there we go. Good evening, everybody. The Newton Planning Board would like to hold a public meeting on May 14th, 2024. At 7:03 PM at the Tabal. First, I would like to say. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So Jim Rowden, our second writer, is removed tonight. I don't know if any members of the planning board are, it does not appear that way.
Doesn't, nobody wait to get.
Perfect. And we have a quorum tonight, so. Do we, no, Mr. Christopappus, is Christopappus, correct?
Papar Christus.
You can call me Pappy, it's a lot easier.
You're not appointed, right? You are now.
Yeah, yes.
We have to appoint Mr. Gibbons, so, okay, so we're all set. So the first hearing tonight for the Sanborn School, Sanborn Regional School District, they've requesting a public hearing for an amended site plan for 31 West Main Street, Newton, Hampshire. The law is referenced as Tax Map 6, Block 7, Lot 4. They've actually asked to continue to May 28th.
So I'll make a motion to grant the continuation to May 28th, 2024, as requested.
Second.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Papar Christus?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That was unanimous.
Next on the agenda is Nicholas Nibberle, is that correct?
Nibberly.
Thank you. Request a public hearing for a non-retail home-based business, home repairs and remodeling at 29 Cranes Crossing, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 7, Block 2, Lot 5. And I feel like my microphone is very loud today. Turn it down possibly. Jim, do you have any comments on this application as whether or not it's technically?
No, it appears complete and it generally appears to conform with your home-based occupation regulations.
Awesome, thank you. If you want to come up to the mic and nod yourself and give us a quick overview of your proposed business.
Nice to meet you, gentlemen. So yeah, I'm here tonight basically applying. I didn't really understand the process or anything up until I met Jim here. I basically registered in LLC. I've been doing business as myself, Nick Nibberly, for the past seven years, self-employed, and was really just looking to grow a little bit, so I registered in LLC, you know, so I could get a little bit of, you know, liability protection as well. I bought a company vehicle and went to register it, and at that point I was informed that in order to register that vehicle, I needed to take this step, so here I am.
Perfect. So it's basically an address for you to conduct your business?
It's really, you know, I need to store my vehicle at my home, you know, because I don't, I don't have a place of business, you know. I do business out of, you know, the one vehicle, the business vehicle that I have, you know, it holds all my tools, and every day that vehicle starts up and goes to the job site. So, you know, I was a little confused in the beginning because, you know, when I looked at the application, it says home-based business, you know, so I don't actually have a home-based business. My business is everywhere else other than my home. But, you know, I understand, you know, that this is what applies.
Awesome. So you're not expecting any employees?
I do look to, you know, grow, you know. I would start with one employee and, you know, I don't know how soon that will be. I'm hoping within a year. And then, you know, eventually I hope to grow enough to where I'd have a shop somewhere, so, you know, this home-based business thing would kind of be moot at that point.
I should rephrase, you're not expecting to have employees working out of the house?
Oh, no.
Other than yourself?
Nope.
Thank you. And there's, in addition to employees, there's no expectation that clients are going to be coming, there's no showroom or anything?
Oh, certainly not, no. I do, I do have a home office that I keep in the home, you know, I do my paperwork, my estimating and stuff like that, but I never have any clients meet me at my home. I like to keep that stuff separate. And, you know, most of my, my stuff is, you know, onsite, you know, even when I, when I meet with a client, I'm going to the house to see what I have to do, and then going back to that office to figure out all my paperwork, and then back to site to negotiate, you know.
And all, all supplies are delivered on the job and you might pick up small items in your vehicle to bring to the site on your way there or whatever, but it's not like you're going to be storing stuff at the house.
You know, I mean, if I have a leftover piece of wood or something like that, you know, sure, I'll throw it in my barn or something like that, but, you know, I don't store any type of, like, chemicals or anything fire hazardous, you know, I don't do any of that kind of stuff, you know.
The, the only thing I would bring up is because he is looking to possibly get help and in case the person comes in when we grant this, are his hours of business, instead of 8:00 in the morning on Saturday, there's no reason why it can't be 7:00 AM because there's no noise ordinance in, in town, you know what I mean? So that he doesn't have to come back before the board. That's the one thing that I would, for your behalf.
Certainly, thank you.
To make it easier.
Yeah.
Is noon on Saturday not enough time? Was 3:00 better, 5:00?
To close up?
Yeah.
I mean, closing up for me is pulling in my driveway.
Yeah.
So, you know, nobody really knows when I started, you know.
Right.
I mean, do your neighbors know when you leave the house in the morning? Do they know when you come home, you know?
I hope not.
You know, so it's essentially that. It's not like I'm coming home to build something in the driveway, you know, when I come home, I'm done.
Because you're allowed to have, if you have somebody working with you, they could come to your house, park their vehicle there, and then jump in your truck with you?
Yeah.
If that's feasible, if that's what you intended or wanted to do.
Yeah, I mean, it's nice to have that allowance, but that's not what I intend to do.
Right.
Yeah.
That's why I said like 7:00 AM, I would, I would go with that for him. And then after pot, like he said, that's no big deal. Because I'm sure you probably use that same vehicle to do errands too.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments in the board? How about the public? Negative? Negative.
So then I will make the motion that the plan falls within the scope of the applicable zoning and site plan regulations for home-based business. The justice would be served by approving the application. Conditions, obtain all local state land use permits, including but not limited to a life safety inspection. You've been told about that, right?
I'm not sure. Could you explain a little further?
Aye. Basically where you're going, where you might be storing stuff in your barn, they need to make sure that you do not have, it's not a hazardous situation.
Oh, sure.
It's just a quick look over.
Now, who performs that inspection?
And then conditions subsequent, easy for me to say, is what we just discussed, no outdoor storage of business-related materials. All business shall take place inside the home in your office, like you talked about, or off-site. Your hours of operation shall be from 6:00 AM till, we'll say, 7:30 PM during the week, so that's good. And then on the weekends, on Saturdays, like we talked about, we'll say 7:00 AM till noon. Is that good with you?
Yeah, yeah, and again, I mean, I'm not doing any business at home.
I know, it just looks better, I think.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because I know, I know contractors usually don't start that late.
Right.
They like to get in early.
Earlier, the better.
Yeah. So.
Now, what's the inspection? Is that an inspection of inside of my home, or what is that? What does that consist of?
Like Jim said, just where you're going to store your stuff.
Oh, okay.
Have them do a quick P C.
Who performs that?
That would be done by the fire department, however, I think, once you explain to them that you use no, you know, gas-powered equipment or whatnot.
Yeah, I don't think he actually.
That's just boilerplate that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the only chemicals that I have stored are that, you know, my personal stuff, you know, it's Run My Chainsaw, or, you know, a lawnmower or stuff like that, you know.
So like he's saying, the chief might just sign off on it.
Yep.
Where you're not, you know what I mean?
Sure.
It's not like it's an automotive business or something you're doing, yeah.
Yeah, they're welcome, anything that interested, yeah.
Jim, did you have a, sorry, a comment?
Yeah, perhaps I missed it. Did you guys take jurisdiction?
No.
Okay. You need to do that, and then you can go with Bob's motion.
No, we didn't vote yet, so that's good.
Yeah, so, step back a little.
Too late. My bad, I jumped the gun.
We're excited tonight, Barbara's not here to keep us.
So I'll move to take jurisdiction, how's that?
Second.
Mr. Eddie, seconded it.
Okay. Okay, that's, Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Papar Christus?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And then Bob made a motion.
And then, right, still stands, my motion to approve.
But we need a second.
Second.
Mr. Ryan seconded it.
Okay. Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Papar Christus?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thanks, Jim.
Well, I'm here.
You are all set. You can get a copy, a signed copy of your notice decision, probably tonight.
Cool.
If you stick around, or you can pick it up tomorrow.
Sure, doesn't matter to me. What's best?
Here you go. Just get, Jim will give you.
I'm sorry, I was writing notes, I.
You already printed his notice of decision, I had to sign it, right?
I had, except for the fact that somebody changed, I got to change one.
The address?
The address.
No, I already did that.
Okay.
However, it got changed from.
Oh, 7:00 AM?
7:00 AM to 8:00.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
So you have copies tomorrow.
Very good.
Yeah, you can have a copy on Thursday.
Very good.
I'm not here tomorrow.
No worries. Thank you all.
Well, thank you for coming in, we appreciate it.
Nice to meet you, gentlemen.
No problem.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Take care. Okay, next we have another home-based business for Jared. I'm going to try to get this, Jared Hubertow?
Hubertow?
Yeah, it's a pretty common name.
Request a public hearing for home-based business, tiling at 7 Willamette Drive, Newton, Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 7, Block 3, Lot 40. Jim?
Again, this seems to be a complete application and generally adheres to your criteria. The only thing I had a question about was there was some possible disposal of product or storing of product at the property that maybe just the applicant can elaborate on.
Okay, thank you. So that being said, do you want to come up? And then we'll make sure we take jurisdiction this time.
Hello, nice to meet you guys.
Hello.
How you doing?
So basically, we had some of the same problems as the last guy who came in. We started an LLC and got a truck that we will mainly be working out of, all my tools will be in, and I didn't find out until I went to go register it that I needed all this, so.
So Jim raised the point about, you said something about maybe storing some materials?
It would really just be the stuff that's in my truck.
Yeah, like tile, grout, stuff like that, nothing hazardous.
Nope, nothing hazardous. And just to say, so all my tools are also battery-powered, there's no gas-operated anything.
Everything's going battery-operated these days.
Everything, yeah.
It's a lot easier.
Yes, it is.
Especially when you want to use them indoors. I'll make a motion to take jurisdiction.
Second.
Mr. Papar Christus?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, is there any other questions from the board?
Tile business is pretty cotton-dry, all your waste you get rid of.
So we subcontract mostly, so the business that we subcontract through has disposal situation for us and storage.
There you go. And you have same slew of questions I asked the last gentleman, generally all of your business is connected off-site or in your home?
None of it will be at the house.
And you're not expecting to have visitors there?
Nope, no sir.
And I would just suggest that we do the same thing as we did to the previous, on Saturdays, make it 7:00 AM to noon.
Okay.
For his benefit.
Any other questions from the board? Jim, do you have anything before I open it up to the public?
No.
Anybody in the audience? Nobody on the internet? You don't have any comments?
Motion, motion to approve application with the following, that the plan, like the last one, falls within the scope of applicable zoning, site planning regulations for home-based business, that justice would be served approving his application. Conditions, present, obtain all local and state land use permits, including but not limited to a life safety inspection, again, it would just be touching base with the fire chief, and then he would make the call to come out, not come out, sign off for you. No outdoor storage of your, your business-related materials, you already said you wouldn't be, they stay in your vehicle. All business shall take place inside your home, your home office. Hours of operation, 6:00 AM to 7:30 PM, and then 7:00 AM to noon on Saturdays. Does that sound good?
Sounds great.
We'll second it.
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Papar Christus?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Joe's side?
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Good luck with your business.
Requesting a public hearing for home-based business, tiling at 7 Willamette Drive, Newton, Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 7, Block 3, Lot 40. Jim?
Again, this seems to be a complete application and generally adheres to your criteria. The only thing I had a question about was there was some possible disposal of product or storing of product at the property that maybe just the applicant can elaborate on.
Okay, thank you. So that being said, do you want to come up? And then we'll make sure we take jurisdiction this time.
Hello, nice to meet you guys.
Hello.
How you doing?
So basically, we had some of the same problems as the last guy who came in. We started an LLC and got a truck that we will mainly be working out of, all my tools will be in, and I didn't find out until I went to go register it that I needed all this, so.
So Jim raised the point about, you said something about maybe storing some materials?
It would really just be the stuff that's in my truck.
Yeah, like tile, grout, stuff like that, nothing hazardous.
Nope, nothing hazardous. And just to say, so all my tools are also battery-powered, there's no gas-operated anything.
Everything's going battery-operated these days.
Everything, yeah.
It's a lot easier.
Yes, it is.
Especially when you want to use them indoors. I'll make a motion to take jurisdiction.
Second.
Mr. Papar Christus?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, is there any other questions from the board?
Tile business is pretty cotton-dry, all your waste you get rid of.
So we subcontract mostly, so the business that we subcontract through has disposal situation for us and storage.
There you go.
And you have same slew of questions I asked the last gentleman, generally all of your business is connected off-site or in your home?
None of it will be at the house.
And you're not expecting to have visitors there?
Nope, no sir.
And I would just suggest that we do the same thing as we did to the previous, on Saturdays, make it 7:00 AM to noon.
Okay.
For his benefit.
Any other questions from the board? Jim, do you have anything before I open it up to the public?
No.
Anybody in the audience? Nobody on the internet? You don't have any comments?
Motion, motion to approve application with the following, that the plan, like the last one, falls within the scope of applicable zoning, site planning regulations for home-based business, that justice would be served approving his application. Conditions, present, obtain all local and state land use permits, including but not limited to a life safety inspection, again, it would just be touching base with the fire chief, and then he would make the call to come out, not come out, sign off for you. No outdoor storage of your, your business-related materials, you already said you wouldn't be, they stay in your vehicle. All business shall take place inside your home, your home office. Hours of operation, 6:00 AM to 7:30 PM, and then 7:00 AM to noon on Saturdays. Does that sound good?
Sounds great.
We'll second it.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Papar Christus?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye. And now, Jim, housing chapter update.
Yep, Jim, can you allow me to share my screen?
Can you guys see that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So first, I'm going to apologize, I wasn't able to bring you nice printed copies there sitting on my desk, and I'm obviously here, so, Jim, I will get you these printed copies. The chapter itself that we last talked about, I guess about six weeks ago, has changed a little bit in forma, just to make it a little bit cleaner and just easier to read, but the content has not changed of any significant fashion with two small examples, or two small items that I'm going to get to in just a second. So it's got a cover, it's got the introduction that you guys had seen, it goes into some really key housing data. Goes into some background of what the regional housing needs and the state laws that are applicable to a lot of housing that are spurring a lot of these conversations, the background on the grant that we had applied for, paying for all of this work, it gets into the affordable housing needs. The thing that looks the biggest format-wise, a little different, is pulling in some of Newton's past housing goals from your previous housing master plan chapter, I should say, actually, your current housing master plan chapter, which is from 1999, to some of your more recent master plan work with your vision, some of the land use chapter items, and then from the age-friendly communities project that was done earlier this year. Recommendations or items that are brought out in those studies or those master plan chapters that really touch on housing, just to really show the fact that a lot of the housing goals in Newton have not changed significantly over time and are being reiterated through a lot of different lenses. Now, when we had last spoken, we talked about the different housing goals, and I have put in yellow here, just a little explanation, I don't intend to keep this yellow font for the final draft, but it's put here really with the intention of just giving you an idea of like, why was this goal put in here? Why was this goal put in here? It just references back to the different chapters, but goal number one is basically having a variety of housing options. That's a really continuous theme you guys have had with your housing goals. Goal number two is one that I have added, and we certainly can discuss this, but it's a common goal that I've been working with a lot of towns, and because we're doing that land use regulatory audit, just having a goal being that you'll conduct additional outreach related to any land use regulation changes you might put forth, particularly those identified in the land use audit, it just gives you a little more heft if you were to go and do a minor or some significant regulation changes in the coming year, just that it's cited even in your master plan chapter to use that as a tool. So that is a slightly new one, but I didn't think it would cause anybody significant heartburn. Item three is really focused on natural resources and making sure no new development overburdens those natural resources, particularly drinking water supply. Goal number four is really focusing new housing in those areas that will minimize conflict between different competing uses. That was really some of the notes that came from the survey and some of the other chapters of trying to keep some of the negative impacts from some of your commercial industrial zones, and the gun range did get noted a lot away from people's housing, because that's sort of a source of a lot of conflict. Item five, really to maintain the sense of community, people really like the rural characteristics of Newton, and people want to also be able to have safe walking routes, and speed limits also got sort of noted, and in a lot of different sources. Item six, this is actually one of the small ones we tweaked from the last discussion, where the town will continue to enforce existing regulations. This is really related to safety and aesthetics, with junkyards and unregistered vehicles.
Jim, when you say gun range back there, do you mean country pond fishing game?
Yeah, that's what it's referencing. Again, this yellow font, I don't intend to keep in the final version, I just wanted you guys to be able to look at and relate it back to things easily.
No, I just wanted to make sure that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's country pond.
Okay.
And then the one new goal that I did add, and I, again, don't think that you'll have any true concerns about this, but was to review the goals identified in this chapter and amend when necessary, because the housing market and information and legal requirements are changing all the time, it is a good thing to review routinely what your goals are. That typically translates to once a year at least, but I didn't put in a timeframe simply because you might need to do it in a few months if some of the laws that are in the legislature in Concord right now go forth, and I don't know the final language on many of those, so there might be things that you're forced to change, but there could be new information that comes in, you know, as interest rates maybe change, or as housing conditions change, that you may need to reevaluate your goals and what some of your rules are, so that was the reason for sticking goal number seven in there. Anybody have any strong or any thoughts at all on either of those two additional goals?
No, sounds good.
Okay. I did put in a summary of the outreach, and the two main items are really related to the survey that was done last September, and putting in sort of the quick thumbnail version of that summary, we have the full survey summary in Appendix B of this document. But then also needing to do a last little bit of outreach, which has to be, in order for you to adopt this master plan chapter, you have to have a public hearing, which is a great reason to have a little bit more public engagement and do a presentation as to why you even bothered to do all of this work, go through some of the outreach, go through some of the laws, touch on the land use audit to a degree to identify, well, where can you go from here? So part of this is I would like to summarize that public hearing when we get to it in a couple of key takeaways after the event to be included in the chapter, but as far as dates, this grant goes through July 31st, but to allow ample time for you guys to look through this latest draft, if you are comfortable, I'd like, in two weeks at your next meeting, if you're comfortable to move that to public hearing and then possibly have the public hearing on June 11th.
Hmm, yeah, yeah, 28th of this month, right?
So, yeah, so you would, we would move it to public hearing on May 28th, and then have the public hearing on June 11th, if you're comfortable on the 28th.
And the public hearing would be June 11th, yeah, that works for me, because I'll be on vacation in July.
And with that, June 11th, um, you know, assuming no big hiccups, we can finalize all the documents and actually be done with all of the grant products.
Sounds good. Jen, in general, where does that put us with the master plan as far as everything that we've been doing?
Um, there are still a couple of chapters that you should update, but it probably puts you to half to two-thirds of the way through the master plan.
About two-thirds, yeah, no, I just, the, the select board is looking to get the master plan updated, and I told them we're in the process, and, uh, probably more so part of that is the CIP, but we'll address that after, when you are done.
Yeah, I mean, the, the CIP can certainly be tackled, um, while you're doing other master plan work, they should talk to each other, but they're not, you know, fully reliant on each other, so I don't feel like the master plan should boost you guys up.
Yeah, no, we just need to get a committee together for that, but.
Okay.
I just, so I can, when I confront them and tell them where we're at and what's going on.
Okay, um, and I will say that the funder for this, um, grant work has come out with some more grant funding that will become available in the next couple of weeks, we're expecting the announcement, um, by mid-June, to actually work on zoning amendments that you might want to put forth as an outcome of some of this work, they can be very small, or they can be really big undertakings, that's at your discretion, but, um, as soon as that comes up, I would like to also have an agenda item where we talk about whether you want to pursue that or not.
Yeah, I think we talked about that before, didn't we, and we said we did?
Um, with that, I am all set with the housing work, unless anybody has questions for tonight?
No, everything sounds good, looks good, thank you.
And I have one other small item, if that's okay.
Oh, now you're pushing it.
I know. Um, we have received the funding to begin doing the groundwater zoning amendment that would be working on your groundwater ordinance for town meeting 2025, um, I would expect to really start having those conversations come around July, um, and it'll really be with the planning board for the first two or three months, and then we would start getting into more public engagement with that zoning amendment.
How much was that grant?
Uh, the grant total is around 20,000, but it's between, um, we're doing work with, also with Southampton.
Wow.
So you're about 10 or 11 of it.
That's fantastic, look at that.
Yeah. That's outstanding.
I don't have anything else, does anybody have anything?
Nope.
Nope, adjourned at.
Uh, hold on.
No, 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 no. Mr. Marshman has a, has a.
Oh, so, like I was saying, um, when Jen was on there, um, the select board, and it is part of the, the planning board's, um, duty, is the master plan, and, and we had people in place that were working on the CIP, um, it is recommended that no more than we get two people from the planning board on the CIP committee, and then we can see if, um, we can get some of the other people involved, maybe somebody from the library and one of the other things, and then if there's any other people that we could get involved in it, so that we can pick that ball back up and get that, so that we can really get this whole master plan put together and, and get the town to continue going in the direction where we need it to go, so that we can continue to make sure that everything gets addressed that's been neglected over the course of all this time. The Board of Selectmen has been doing a, a good job of, of moving that forward, and we're asking the planning board to help out with that.
What nights do you guys meet?
So, this would be, it's a subcommittee from the planning board, so you would pick your own meetings, have to take minutes, and then just you would report back to the planning board what's taking place and what's going on with the meetings, and everything that's being addressed.
So you're looking for two people from the planning board to assist you guys?
To, to, well, the two people from the planning board would be running the committee, and then we would get the other people to, um, join in to help oversee it, and then, like I said, then you would just report, because you're a subcommittee, you would report to the planning board, and, um, you're basically an informational committee that gets it together and then puts it together in a package so that we can get it, approve it, and then present it, and then get it put into the master plan.
I'm on your board.
You're a good man, there's one.
I'm like tapped out for the next couple of months. I can help.
You're a good man, Jen, all right, so we got two, go ahead, Jim, were you gonna say something?
No, 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 uh, you said you have two, Mr. Ryan has one. Mr. Eddie is two. Oh, Mr. Eddie, okay. But Jen has some feelings, thoughts, concerns?
Yeah, it's just, it's just a recommendation, um, I know I sort of followed the, the CIP process you guys had gone through a few years ago, which I think you had, you hit a couple of bumps, um, but the town of Rye and the town of Northampton both do really nice CIPs, and I like them for different reasons, I would highly recommend taking a look at their CIPs to get an idea of what solid CIPs for similar-sized towns can look like, um, you can do the process however you want, but just to see what the outcome can look like, it might be helpful.
Do you know the people on the committee? No, I'm just curious.
What's a CIP?
Capital Improvement.
Capital Improvement Plan, so it's about, like, the build, the town buildings and whatever, I think you've already been talking.
Well, I'm on that committee, too.
That's what I mean, so that would get, help you with gathering some of that information to be able to put forth.
Ms. Rowden, you said Rye and what other town?
Northampton.
Northampton.
Yeah, so if you looked at, up their CIPs, like she's suggesting, that would give you, like, a, a footprint that you would be able to see what we're looking to do.
I'll, I'll get you copies.
And then, like.
I know the Northampton Administrative Assistant very well.
There you go.
They're, they're both online.
Yeah, I'm sure they are. And we'll, um, I'll talk to Jim, the town administrator, about reaching out to some of the other department heads about seeing if we can't get some other people involved with you to help you out.
These, it's 116 pages.
All right.
There's a lot of detail in it.
In Rye's?
Yeah.
It looks like they paid a consultant to put this together.
They don't. I would take credit for it, but I had nothing to do with it.
I feel like the people on the committee may be like accountants.
Um, I can give you a simpler version of what was done in Fremont, New Hampshire?
Fremont feels much more like.
Yeah, a little more comparable.
I mean, the, the tables, just to have the, the format of this, it's, it's a very nice report. Look at this. I'll print out copies for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, I can just find it online, easier. What wastepaper?
Jen, is it typical for a community to inventory their capital assets like this?
Um, I wouldn't say it's super typical, it's not atypical of.
That's what Rye did?
Communities, but I think as a starting point, it's nice to know where you maybe need to get information.
Is there any, I know there's asset management grant funding available at the state.
Uh, there is, but it's typically.
Is it for water, I'm very aware of it for, like, watering culverts.
Water, there is for, um, like, road inventories, there's asset management tools through UNH and the Technology Transfer Center, um, it's not necessarily comprehensive for a full CIP, uh, but there's some easy Excel, Excel spreadsheets that can be used to just sort of be the basic tracking, so you get one comprehensive spreadsheet of at least the capital expenses, and then you get more detailed reports from the departments as you're trying to get them to come up with what their capital expenditures may be in the next six years. The idea is just documenting it, so you know how it's gonna impact really the bottom line and the tax rate.
Okay, when does this have to start?
Now, like, three years ago, or that, like, people come December and January, like, department heads aren't up at the microphone saying, "I can't pave the roads," because there's been no money put into the roadway funds, and then they can go back and justify that?
Yeah, the CIP is like the long-term strategy, your budget committee is really, you know, your annual expenditures.
Right, so like, we were talking about the condition of our properties, where we need to be, about maybe building a new town hall within the next year, two years, and then once that's done, maybe five years or seven years down the road, a new, um, library, police department, whatever, where we're at, or, or doing an overhaul to recondition them, depending on their conditions and, and all of that. Jim?
Oh, I have two items on another note, um, one is, in June is the annual meeting for the RPC reps to elect their, their, the RPC people, um, it's usually a dinner meeting, I don't know yet what the cost is, the planning board has always picked it up, are they still willing to?
What is it?
It's the annual dinner meeting for the, for the Rockingham Planning Commission, Commissioners, where we all get together, we elect the officers for the ensuing year, they make a couple of awards presentations.
I mean, yeah, how much is it?
Last time it was like $35 a person.
Please, think it happens, it's not gonna be that cheap this time.
Well, ju, we have a new bookkeeper, so I want to make sure that we've got.
Yeah.
If it's $35 or something, we'll figure it out.
I think, I think we're, I think we're good with that.
Okay, so, Mr. Marshon is making that motion?
Yes.
Second?
Second it.
Okay, Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Papakristus?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
And the other thing is, um, tonight was a perfect example. I'd like to be authorized to go into the Policies and Procedures Manual, which I'm already, I have a couple of minor things to correct that would go to public hearing, I would like to recommend to the board that they take non-retail home-based businesses out of the line of public hearing requirements, like they did with the, the lot line adjustment last year, and make it, they still have to come, they still have to meet in front of us, however, it starts to add, one of these, the two gentlemen tonight, I believe, it's costing them like $300 just to appear before you, between the, the.
Which is crazy.
Publication and the, and these are businesses where the people leave the town, retail, you know, if somebody wants to, you know, start an antique shop in their barn, that's a different story, that's a full retail, and that would affect your neighborhood, however.
Jen?
You guys have to have a public hearing for it, because in your zoning, it's a conditional use permit.
Oh, okay.
Which requires, we can change, work on changing the zoning for next year, I think we should have a bigger discussion on home-based business, and, um, but you have to have it as a public hearing at this point.
So next year, we would have to put a warrant article to revise the zoning?
Yep.
All right, so that's something.
I'll put it on that list.
Yep. That'll work. Jen, when the meeting ends, please don't hang up.
Okay.
Okay. That was my two comments. Okay, any other comments? I didn't see other business on the agenda. So we're adjourned at, what is it, at 7:40?